Pete's gonna mute you.
Do we have anyone who would like to lead us in prayer? On here.
I will do.
Who?
I will do.
Okay. So do it.
Yeah.
Okay, the second. I got a follow up procedure with Chairman Dolly as well. Call the order for a Watertown City Council Joint Plan Commission meeting for March 21st of 2024. Please rise. Councilman Jurnel leads us in prayer. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your grace, your unending love. We gather today to do the work of the people of Watertown and the surrounding area. We grant, we ask you for your patience that only you had. We look forward to digging into the issues that face those here and around us. Lord, we thank you for your guidance. Thank you for those present. In your name pray. Amen.
Amen.
Peace.
Good Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under this law, with liberty and justice for all. We will establish a forum for the city council. City manager back with the coffee roll.
Yep, just one. All right, Tupper.
Here.
Johnny.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Danforth.
Here.
Holley.
Here.
Jorance.
Here.
Bueller.
Forum is established for the city council. Chairman Dolly. Establish a forum for the Watertown City Plan Commission. Need a recall vote.
Case, Boletsky, President, Dargitz Johnson.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Spire.
Here.
Work. Oh, him. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Danforth.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Tupper. Thank you very much. Council, any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
K plus A and A. One that carries. Chairman Dolly. I'll do the same for the city.
I shall bring them.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed?
Who was the second on that? Sorry.
Let's wait. Frank. I will open it up for open forum now. Anyone is here who would like to discuss something in front of the city council or plan commission that is not on today's agenda, now is your time to do so. I'll close open forum and we will go into our regular agenda. Just very quick, I want to say thank you for coming and doing this. I think we are all hopefully looking forward to reaching a consensus on how we go forward. The focus on today's meeting is going to be tight because we have a tight window to do our timing. I will explain part of the reason for that. But the main goal is to allow every member who votes upon CL zoning district. That means everyone on the plan commission, everyone on the city councils who have their voice heard equally. And they can go on the record and then it's also to take a vote on how we move forward. And you'll see that going, you'll see that in the paper ballot that is coming out. Part of the reason why I did certain things like the paper ballot is I don't want anyone to say that there is any swaying of opinion. So everyone gets to vote according to their own conscience, not based upon how, you know, the vote is going or anything like that. And then it's also just make it very official. So in order to move forward, the first step is to understand each other. And that's why I'm giving everyone a chance to have your voice heard. You could, everyone is going to have a chance to speak. You can speak about anything CL related. I will go first just to give an example. After that Chairman Dolly will speak, but after that, we did a random draw. Mallory Towell did a random draw and she actually has it filmed. I was not present. I don't even know what the order is going to be. Again, that's just so that no one can say that the process was swayed or anything like that. I want to give everyone an equal chance to have their voice heard. The focus is going to be tight. We just want everyone's voice to be heard and then we want a process going forward. And the reason why it's a tight focus is because whenever we open CL for discussion, it goes on for a long time. Because there are so many other things you can start talking about. You could talk about Toby Slue, campgrounds, Stony Point, impervious versus pervious. We're not going to get into the weeds on that. That time will come later. So there will be no debates, but if you have questions on the process or this specific meeting, please bring them forward. I feel like we're all smart people and we've all been through this discussion many times before. So that's why I'm just going to give everyone a chance to speak and go forward. So the paper ballots will be passed out as soon as Mallory has it. We'll give her a chance. But you will basically have four options. I have sent this all off to everyone present previously. Option one is leave it as is. Option two is amend it. Option three, explore it. Option four, scrap it entirely. If the vote is for either option two or option three, then there are going to be subcategories that we will then vote upon. The hope is that we reach a majority on one of these four items. If one is not reached by either board, then that itself is going to be the course, which is there's going to be no consensus. It's a complicated issue and we're just going to say, we're going to have to continue as is. And people will have to tackle it how they want. Under amendment, under amending it, that is bringing forward actual proposals to the plan commission and city council for discussion. I emailed off and I passed along a list of every proposed amendment that I have ever heard on CL. I have also asked every member here present if I have forgotten something to let me know. I have heard no responses. So I believe this is an exhaustive list of every amendment that was ever proposed. Any member present, plan commission or city council can bring forward any of these amendments. I promise you, I will second them. I will give them a day in court. That's if that process, if that's where the, where the boards want to go. And that is because there are lots of proposals. Bring that proposal forward, vote it up, vote it down, move on.
We're not doing that today.
No, we're not doing it today, but we're deciding, is this the course that we want to go on? Another course that we could go on is open it up for exploration. That is going to be forming a committee. There was some talk about doing an unofficial committee, but you can't do an official action to form an unofficial committee. So I can't do that. I'm bound by policy and ordinance. But if you do open it up for exploration, then that is forming a committee. That is allowing people to get together to talk, to take a longer time. That can be a tighter focus. That can be a wide open focus. That's up to the board to decide. So you can have, choose amending, which is bringing specific proposals forward. You can choose exploration. Now keep in mind, none of this absolutely restricts anyone from bringing forward an amendment or doing something with an official action that they want. Option four is scrap it entirely. I want to make something noted that any staff activity with any of these, whether that is you want help with language for amending or you want help facilitating a committee, that is going to be city manager Mac's decision. She has control over the personnel and she will decide who among the personnel will be present and what's then, they can commit to that. This does not end the process. Any member can still spearhead change after this. This is just to set the will of, hopefully set the will of the body. And this is a binding vote. So if the, if the body votes to, let's say, leave it alone. Then that is going to be the official reaction of the body. If then a specific member wants to go about and say, hey, I'm not quite done. Then they can bring up an amendment themselves, but that was not the overall will of the body. Also, if you want to form a committee, you can still do research. I'm not stopping you from doing that. But that is not the will of the body. And then you also do not then have the power to request staff participation from city manager Mac. Because, and I'll explain that when I, when I speak, but is there any questions about the process?
So if I want to say something other than this, I can do that during my speaking time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, all right, we'll move forward. Got to see the agenda. Oh. Mallory, you have the list of random speaking. I did say I would go first and Chairman Dolly, you will go second. And then after that, it is random. I do not know who that order is. If I could have someone passing out ballots, let's say, while I'm speaking, that would be great. So people can start looking at it, even though they did get it ahead of time. So I'm going to start my five minutes here. I do not anticipate taking that. So I'm just going to start off, I believe in development at the lake. I believe that it is an asset, but in order to have an asset, you have to maximize use there. That means participation for the people who live in town, who would like to get on the lake. And by lake, I mean Compeska, but it also means Pelican. So I am open to the idea of development. I believe that there are a lot of good things in the CL commercial lake zoning ordinance as is. However, I do think that there are ways to make it better. There are several amendments that have been proposed that I think have merit. And do deserve to have a further hearings. I would rather focus upon those amendments that I think can make the best use of getting sealed better. I would rather focus upon those amendments than opening up the entire thing or a committee. That's just my, my personal preference. So when it comes time for my vote, I will vote for number two, which is amend and two way. You don't have to tell me how you're going to vote. I'm just explaining why I'm going to vote this way. Because I think it is the best way to bring forward actual proposals and get them their day in court and have them be voted up or voted down. And then you move on. And I think that's the best way to actually get things done because my main goal is to get us here with a procedure going forward. So that we not only don't go back to go, but we destroy that square and can never go back to it. Because we're taking official action on how we collectively want to go forward. I think that we have given CL an incredibly thorough hearing. Not only just when we were originally adopting the ordinance, which most of many people were here during the original adoption and formulation of CL. Not everyone, but a lot of people were. But just collectively, I have said, I estimated that personally in official meetings and work sessions, I have been present for over forty hours of dialogue on CL. That's official. Unofficially, I could easily estimate at least twice that much. I don't want to speak for any of you, but I know it's been a lot. I know how much the staff has spent. Watertown has a lot of other things that we need to focus upon. I believe that CL is good. It can be a lot better. That's why I think bring forward specific amendments, give them their day in court, make it better. But as far as spending more time just talking about the ordinance in general, I'm ready to move on. Because I think that we've done it enough. So that's how I'm going to vote. That's my decision. I respect your decision. You don't have to vote my way. You don't even have to follow me with the pattern that I have given to speak. But thank you very much. And I have two minutes left. But I don't need them. So thank you very much for hearing me out. Chairman Dolly. Take the flare. It's yours.
I also support the commercial lake district. I think the definitely a lot of hard work and effort is sown from a lot of people and bodies here. It is certainly something that is a significant concern for the community and we do need to do something. Ultimately, whatever actions we end up taking, need to get us to a position where we're more confident in the ability to initiate and complete a rezone and complete development of activities that we find to be amenable to the district. Certainly like some of the ideas that have been floated out, I would support whichever direction that we go and further into discussion on those. But again, I think ultimately the way that we need to frame this and work towards is what is going to get us to a level of confidence with the zoning district and with the uses within the zoning district that we can actually push something. I think some, some discussion was, some discussion was had around potentially breaking it up into zoning districts on the lakes, near the lake and proximity to the lake. I think there is some merit in doing that, similar to the way that few other zoning districts around town. But if we go down that direction, I think we need to seriously look at what we consider as permitted uses versus conditional uses. I'd like to see the rules drafted in the ordinance in such a way that not only the developers, but the people within the community have a good understanding of what can go where and some reasonable assurance that if they start a process of trying to get a development put together, there's a reasonable assurance that it's going to move forward. That's not what we have today. We have a lot of contention. We have a lot of different opinions. And that's why we're not seeing a lot of, a lot of progress. So in all of this, we need to, we need to be focused on what are we going to do in order to give us the confidence that what we've drafted and what we've enacted is something that we're all comfortable.
Thank you very much.
That's all I've got.
Right, who is next?
Jeff.
Jeff Brink.
All right. Thank you. I think, I think it's always tough to do any rezone to commercial because the neighborhood is scared by it. I think, you know, we see it everywhere in town. People have their homes. They've put a lot of money and time into their homes and rezoning to commercial is difficult. It's especially difficult at the lake when more of the neighborhood presence shows up to meetings. And then, you know, there was a lot more people in the eye to do a rezone. And that made when we rezoned C3 out of the lake several years ago, very difficult. And it helped prompt us to making this CL zone. I think this, the CL zone has a lot of protections in place to ensure that nothing too hazardous to the neighborhood happens. I think if anything, it should be opened up to, to be a little bit more development friendly. But ultimately, I think right now it's a good compromise as to how we can move forward with allowing commercial to happen at the lake. And I think we, at one point had an idea of where we wanted those commercial areas to develop. And I think my mind, those areas, it still could be commercial today. So that's kind of where, where my thoughts are right now and that's really all I have.
Right? Thank you very much. Next.
Richard.
Councilman Jorance.
Thank you. When I ran last June and went door to door in this ward, which is talking about the ward that I went door to door in, the number one issue was responsible development. I'll go on the record to say that this ordinance may have looked good when you put it in place two or three years ago, but it does not look good today. And if there's examples out there that show this and they're, you know, they may not be getting a hold of every councilman and every planning commission person. But they are getting a hold of a couple of us. They have issues. And, you know, if we do this for the right reasons, you can tell. I mean, we're allowing a quote mobile home park right in the middle of a residential area. I'm not exaggerating. This is what they feel when they drive by homes that look like mobile homes. And yeah, maybe there's some definition issues, but that isn't the only thing. I mean, campgrounds do, do get at the gut of the issue here. I feel they can go through a PUD, which just gives it a little bit more work. If anything, some definitions really need to be defined in what we have on the votes right now. That is, if, I'll be honest with you, the conversations at campgrounds is just going to get heated up as we speak. It's not awful. So a lot of more discussion is coming down the pipe and going to be in front of you. If you haven't felt it already, it's going to be coming just because of the way things are going there right now. Development is maybe slow. Maybe this isn't how it always happens, but this was our first idea of, this was our first go and this is how it went. There are multiple homeowners that have lived there for quite some time that have had, that have issues. And they've reached out to a few of us. So that is one thing why I'm not going to vote for number one, leave the ordinance as is. But I'm, I'm still debating on which way to go. So campground's number one. You know, really people are number one resource when you look at it in Watertown. But really, number two is the lake. And there, there are people that come here that own property on the lake, that just enjoy it for the summer. Maybe not in the winter, but they're enjoying it for the summer. That is bringing not only economic development, but that's bringing people who pay for sales, they buy things, which is sales tax revenue. The number one city financial item is sales tax revenue. Why would we mess up the number one resource by developing, developing it irresponsibly? So that's, you know, that's just kind of where I've been heading. Couple of the other notes that are going to be more controversial and they're starting and we're getting calls on them. I don't know if anyone else is, are BRBOs. And it is really piping up in communities around South Dakota, especially in the Black Hills right now. But Watertown will be the next spot because of the lake. And we'll get more numbers and more numbers and it's just going to keep growing. And we're going to go, we got one minute left?
Yep.
Perfect. So, you know, I don't know if that needs a separate discussion or if that can be discussed right here in this zoning. But parking, you know, loud parties. You know, the peacefulness of why people come to Lake Compeska are at jeopardy, not only with our current zoning and campgrounds, but with BRBOs. So not sure where I want to go with it, but that's kind of where I'm, I'm at right now, everyone.
That's it, ma'am. You still had time? All right. Councilman Tupper.
Well, for one thing, I'm going to say that City of Watertown has a unique problem or a unique, maybe it's not a problem, but most towns would envy having what we have with Lake Compeska and Lake Pelican. I think there's a lot of work that could be done with it. My goal at the end of this is hopefully we can come to a conclusion that we can move forward for something. Because right now we're at a standstill. We have developers that want to develop stuff. We've given them no guidance of where they can go. Because things that we give them, that should be able to go through, we seem to find a way of telling them no. We need to come down with some positive goals. This is what you can do that both these bodies can live with. I mean, the last thing I want to do is see any more of the Board of Adjustment Plan Commission vote on something and the city council turn it down or vice versa. We're all out for the best of the community and, and Lake Compeska is very, like I say, very unique, but it's also, I don't live at the lake, but it's also my lake. So I also got to look at what's good for the residents of Watertown. Not only residents of Watertown, but people that want to come and visit Watertown. It's one of our best known secrets, put it that way. You want to talk about a place that's, that's people who come and stay, you know, that's what campgrounds are meant for. Where most campgrounds are on the lake. You know, so do they make sense? Yes, in a responsible manner. There's a lot of different ways we can, we can look at this. I would say that, you know, amending an ordinance with some good work behind it would be very, very good. Like I say, it's very unique situation and there's a lot of men and women that put a lot of time and effort into this two years ago to come up with, with what we got. Ordinances are meant to be changed and we do it every day. So is this the best solution for this? No. But can we change some things where we can come up with common ground that we're not fighting against developers every day? Because it seems like that's all we do. We, we set things forward and, and they go to their plans and they spend all their money on their plans and they come to us and we turn them down. So pretty soon we're just not going to get anybody who wants to develop anything. But I also respect the, the people that live at the lake. I mean, but it's no different. If, if I don't want something across the street from me. You guys have heard me say this many times, buy it, you know, because nothing's protected. But you try to take care of what you can. So that's all I got to say. And just true respect for everybody that's in this room and thank you all for, for attending.
Thank you very much. Councilman Bueller.
Heavenly, waiting for its council.
All right, Councilman Bueller.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Like to thank you for facilitating today, ma'am. And, and I'd like to thank everybody for showing up this week. I think this is, in my opinion, some of you have heard this, this has really gotten blown out of proportion. I think this has gotten way more complex than it really needs to be. But I do absolutely think we need to amend this. I thought this from early back in April of 23. I think it's relatively easy to do this, in my opinion. And the two things, the two main things that come to light are responsible development out there and how we protect the residents that own property out there. Those are a couple of the key things. Transportation is another issue as well, what kind of profit can we generate in some of those areas? But I honestly don't think this, this is that complex. And I think the, the review that we did, the study for Lake Compeska, I think whoever's involved with setting this up, I think you really need to take a look at that again. Because that were, those were the residents of that area that responded to all the questions they had for that. One thing I think as we move forward, that we really do need to take a look at how we handle Pelican, you know, how that fits into this ordinance. So if that needs to be a separate ordinance altogether. But I do believe we have a responsible, I think we have a very tenured planning commission that can deal with this issue. You know, if it comes to conditional uses, I think we would be responsible and do the right things in that regard. So I guess that there were two of us that responded to a request or suggestions for the ordinance back in April of 23. And I think it was Mike Danforth, councilman Mike Danforth himself. And so I'm, I'm still stand beside that, the one that I proposed and whatever happened, I think will be what I think. But don't, you can likely revise this, you know? And then I heard that, I heard this stated several times. You know, we put all this work into this and now we want to revise it. And anybody that's been involved in planning stuff, we, we've revised planning ordinances many, many times. It's not that big a deal. We can do it. And, and if it doesn't work, maybe in a year, we look at it again. We need to make the changes and we, then. So that's, that's my feeling. Thank you very much.
Cost effective. Okay. And cost effective. I need that. Councilman. I want some guys probably. They're laughing, not taking up my time.
No, no, it is. Effective, do you want to wait for a vote?
Well. Okay.
Okay.
Babe, all of you know that I have been very vocal in regards to what I feel is a need to look at this ordinance at all. And there's a lot of reasons. I've spent a lot of time having discussions, a lot of time researching. I appreciate the opportunity that we have here today and I will thank.
And I will say, side note, is the planning commission and council, I think have more critical issues on very, the stronger community type issues. It's probably does us some good to, to meet on a joint basis and go through those things together and have some discussion to get to a solution. But in no way, shape or form is my notion that we need to review this. Is it disrespectful or not appreciative of the time that people have put into this? I know that. But like Councilman Beeler said, you know, just because we, we have an ordinance doesn't mean that we're not gonna review it. Because if that's the case, logically, no matter which side you are politically, that's the case, we'd still be working on the very same COVID protocols that were set four years ago. But they've changed as they've learned and things have happened. We know way more today with the, the CL zoning and what the concerns are and what the issues are, what works and doesn't work than we did three, four years ago. We know where the public's at, way more aware today than they were four years ago. There's no question about it. I see this as having just two options to vote on. We either leave it alone or reform a group together of staff, planning commission members and council members to thoroughly sit down and talk about it and look at it. One of the things that, that I've said all along is I've, there's been a disconnect between what I've told was the basis of the, the CL ordinance, and that was the Lake Compeska master plan. And there was just something that just wasn't lining up, still hasn't lined up to me. And I've never gotten an answer as to why that is. So I, I reached out to former Mayor Karen and I reached out and talked at length with Christopher Shire at, at the Consulance. Without question, the input, the information that I got from them supported my concern that the master plan and what was recommended ultimately does not match up with what was recommended and, and what is in our, our ordinance language. Don't know which one's right or wrong, but I do wanna understand, if that's the case, how did we get from here to where we are today? I, I wanna understand it. Our job is budget and legislative, legislative is ordinance. So, I wanna understand that because I'm one of the people that hear from a lot of different people when it comes to concerns on this thing. I get all kinds of phone calls, text messages. My, my wife hates to see me go to Menards because that's a two-hour deal. So to me, there's a disconnect. I wanna understand how we got from there to there. I do believe there's some other issues there, I don't think, and neither does Christopher Shire. To say that we're gonna apply the same development standard, the same zoning standard to Compeska as we do Lake, uh, Lake Pelican, doesn't make sense. They're completely different in their, in the type of lake they are and their development stage. And he said to apply the same rules probably doesn't work very well. You have some slight differences. I think there's some things that are too lax and problematic within the, the current zoning ordinance language. I think there's some things that are too restrictive. We have a 50% lot coverage, correct, that we have as a, as a rule? But if they're, if, if you look at what the zone is on the map and somebody well away from the lake, they have to give up 50% of their land in order to use it when it's not on the lake or immediately accessible to the lake. That doesn't, talk about what's fair or not fair to development, that's not fair. For the cost of land, and we're saying you gotta give up 50% of your land, it makes no sense. So these are the kinds of things. The other thing, we ran into this at, on the PD request on South Lake Drive over there, the Man South request, where it's the, the 50% lot coverage. One minute. Well, that lot coverage doesn't take into effect that the official lot, that was in the laws. So we talked about why do we have the 50% lot coverage? Well, that's so we don't have, have the concentration, right? We wanted space, didn't want that. But go out there and look what happens if half your lot is in the lake. That's the half you don't have to develop. So what do you end up with? You end up something that's very concentrated, just like the developments on the west side of, of Prairie Lakes. I, I couldn't help but wonder, how did that happen? It's all contractor shops, condos there, they're packed in there. There's not 10% open area there. I asked Randy one day, I said, Randy, 'cause she helped me with that, I said, how'd that happen? Well, the, the water bowl to the west was constituted the part that enabled them to do that. I don't think that's what our intention was to say 50% of a whole land area. I think we were talking about, I guess is, in any given area to have 50% coverage and not that heavy concentration, which is what we have there. So I just think, my thing is, I'm gonna vote without question, form a committee to have good quality discussion, 'cause that's what it takes for something to come back so we can, and we all work together, come back with something that's recommendation, understanding of what, why.
Commissioner Henson.
Yeah, I just, again, wanna thank everybody for the time they've put in on this. I, I really just came to listen. I really don't have anything intelligent to add for station. I'm gonna yield my time.
I've been giving this a lot of thought, driving around of the county, looking at things. And the one thing that I don't think has ever been addressed, was just brought to my attention, is that we can have horses in the CL district in the city of Watertown. Well, that's fine if you have what's, I don't know, like five acres per horse. But let's say we have 20 acres now on the lake, but across the road from the lake. And you have 20 horses on 10 acres, that's not enough. So now we have a commercial use. And I think, I'm sure Kyle Peters can probably, he knows the numbers and how to do the math on what are you gonna do with that manure? And how many cows or how many horses you can have per acre? I think that's something that we should really think about, 'cause maybe today we don't have something, but maybe down the road, we might have a big horse going on. And the other one is I'm agreeing with Mike. I think that we should go back to where the water, the protected water is not included, I mean 50% that's not developed, so we don't have so much concentration. And I'm also on the conservation district and that's in the minutes too. That that's how our committee feels about that, 'cause we have to bring back all of our land. And that would be at Compeska or Pelican. And that's all I gotta say.
Alright, you have lots of time.
Oh, I know. I got it done.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone for sitting and listening. And to keep me from ranting, I, I kinda wrote out my, my testimony. I do this quite often when I'm in here, I swear. As I see it, very much similar to the ballot we have in front of us, I think we have three options. The first one is kill the CL district. And I'll support this option, 'cause I think there has been a considerable amount of work done in the result of these use policies regarding Lake Compeska. And this conversation is older than CL. I've been in the game here for 31 years. We talked about non-conforming uses and non-conforming lots back in 2002. At that time, we were talking about the need to create maybe a separate zoning district for the lake itself, because it's not typically R1 like we see in the R1 areas of the community. We also talked about, you know, at the time of the development of the land use plan and the master Compeska plan, that there was groups that were talking about resorts and resort developments and how to make, to make more accessible to people that live in town, not only the people that are just living at the lake. We're all Watertonians and we all want access to the lake. And so, that conversation about resorts really started to morph into the CL district, which was also happening at the same time at the master Compeska plan that was being developed. And I sat on that subcommittee as well. And, you know, I think what ended up, the CL, what finally got developed, it was, is, it was something that I would say a pretty good compromise, because there was no way that we were gonna get to yes on a perfect solution. And for example, I had a Florida-Davidson butt heads a lot. We like each other, we respect each other. Nobody came to an agreement on some of the things that came out of that CL. Lake's had it almost meeting as well. And I, I thought it was a very good process. In the end, I think, you know, killing the CL district would be a great disservice to not only those that who worked on the policies, but also the unanimous decisions that were made by both the city council and the planning commission to create the CL districts. So, option two, we can review the CL district to see if there are changes that makes it more minimal. And I'm a policy wonk, it's what I do for a living. I'm always open to the idea of honest, open conversation dialogue, where there is a realistic potential of creating change that is generally acceptable to all. And I thought we had done this five years ago. And while there may be some need to tweak the CL district that would make it easier to support an concept of CL out there, there is no guarantee that whatever changes that we may come up with over the course of two weeks, a month, six months, a year, is going to make certainty in our decision-making processes. You know, it's gonna take more than one or two meetings to get through this. And I really think probably where my condition on my involvement or perspective in the process would be is that we need to come up with some language that either mandate a decision, eliminate discretion. It could very well be, you know, saying within this specific zoning district, there are the list of uses. And of those list of 10 uses, they are all gonna be permitted uses as long as you need the 27 subsections of what goes into a campground. And that way, as Randy was saying, you have some idea of certainty that something's gonna happen. Or you go out and you identify specific areas within the air, that land mass of the, of the lake, commercial lake. You just come up with, right? These are the 17 areas that we're gonna do it in. And then when there's torches and pitchforks in the room, it, it, it doesn't matter, because you're gonna adhere to your policy and your plan. Otherwise, if you know, if we can't draft this policy that takes the motion and discretion out of the decision-making, we're just spinning our wheels. And then that kinda leads me into my last option, leave CL district alone. On the one hand, there doesn't occur to me much of an appetite by some members of both the planning commission and city council to try to implement this zone. I'm not sure why that is. I'm gonna use this analogy. It's like we need a new car. We go out and we do our research. That's our planning documents. We research those options, then we bought the car. That's our zoning policy. Heck, we even took it up for a tune-up, which was the subsequent zoning amendment before we even actually drove it. And now the car sits in the garage. And what bothers me the most is that we're too fearful that maybe the car will go too fast or a wheel's gonna fall off or we're gonna go off in the ditch. But in the end, I look at cars from a utilitarian aspect. I mean, I don't think that they're meant to be just looked at or sat in the garage. They need to be driven. So if we can't agree to some sort of certainty or an endgame to the charade, then my gut tells me we should just leave this alone. And maybe the new planning commission and county commission and city council members in the future will have a change of heart and try to implement what we've done. I'm not objectionable to participating, but I think we have to have, the very first thing is what is our certainty? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this meeting is being recorded, so there was a little bit of punch time. 30 seconds for Councilman Danforth, 30 seconds for Commissioner Kays. But, and that's, I don't wanna stop anyone. I just wanted people to know that I want you to focus.
Okay.
He's not here. And he did email me, but I, he did not say that he wanted me to express his desires. So I, even though he did email me what his desire was, I'm not going to say that, because he did not specifically tell me to.
Dargit Johnson. Thank you, thank you for everyone's time and the time that has been spent on this. I just got a few things too. I, I guess I come from a different perspective maybe as where my career is. Like, I see it differently than a lot of you do, because I'd have to sell that house that's next to that restaurant, next to that campground. So I, I, I just wanna say that I think that the ordinance is, is way too wide open. I think we saw that in the last issue that we had in front of ourselves, that it was just, it was too big. And I think our biggest thing, our asset is our people and it is our lake. There is not too many towns in this state or country for that matter, I suppose in Minnesota there are, but that have a lake. So, yeah, I believe we all get to use that lake and we should be entitled to it. But we have parks on that lake that we, I feel, have not totally developed the way they could be. Our campsites on those existing parks could be a lot nicer than they are. We have Jackson that's not totally developed to the, the north memorial park. I mean, they get used, city park gets used and, and then, you know, we had some of the flooding issues, so some of that wasn't getting used. I'm not against more camping around the lake. I grew up on Enemy Swim and Pickle Lake. They have beautiful state parks there. And we all get to enjoy that lake. But we also, you know, half of that Enemy Swim is, is surrounded by native land that will never be developed. And I'll tell you, that's why that lake is as clean as it is, because it is not overpopulated. And it will stay clean because of that. And do I wish I could buy some land up there and build on the north side of that lake? Absolutely. So I think, again, getting back to, I believe we do need to look at this ordinance. I think it, it doesn't need to be thrown the baby out of bathwater, but I think it does need to be reined in. We have, we're, we're just leaving ourselves way too exposed. We're not protecting, and again, just like Randy said, I might get a grocery store across the street from me, I can't stop that. But, so buyer beware. I mean, you buy at the lake, gotta know that. You know, it's, it, your realtor better be telling you that that's commercial property across from you. If you're not aware of that, buyer beware, because it could be. And then to come with the pitchfork and, you know, at the, at the meetings and say, why I didn't know that? Not city council or anybody else's job to tell you that. You need to do your judgments and know what you're buying. But those people that have already been out there years and years and years are the ones that go, hey, this isn't what we signed up for. And that's where I have a problem with that, because that isn't what they signed up for. But, so to me, I think we just, we are more responsible to our landowners, to our tax base out there already. We just, I don't know that, you know, Compeska needs to be overruled. Well, if that's what we're looking for, not. So, and I just, I, I guess that's all I really have to say, is just, we need to, I think, really tweak that ordinance. We've tweaked other ones, we've changed them, that's not the end of the world. Just dissing anybody's work on that or anybody's opinion on that, we're just looking at it again, it's no different than the constitution. My goodness, we've made lots of changes over 200 years. It's not saying that they didn't have it right the first time. Nobody gets it right the first time necessarily. So, I don't think anybody should take it personally when you say, this just doesn't feel right. And I think we just need to be responsible to our public, lake presidents and city people who want our, you know, every county, everybody who wants to use the lake, we still need to be responsible what we do with that water. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for calling this joint session. You know, Compeska's been allowed to develop to the state it is over the last century and it's constrained. You know, a lot of, you know, lots there, there's not a whole lot of space to expand, so it's changing over time. And we're, we're getting in a lot of conflict points here in some of this. So, I mean, everything coming to the plans commission, it's a conditional use, is gonna be, I don't think is gonna resolve the challenges the lake faces. And this is gonna probably migrate over to Pelican over the preceding decades. So I, I know that there was a lot of good work that went into the, the ordinance that we currently have. And a lot of folks in the area were involved in it. And I know acknowledging Councilman Danforth and Beeler, nothing's written in stone. Everything should be open for review and revision. And also just being cognizant that whatever you do, you don't wanna create conditions where you have haves and have-nots. Those that have been given uses in the past, you know, conditional, of those that have gotten tiffs to develop. And then, you know, we're gonna revise it and create unintended consequences or create a condition for the have-nots going forward. I think that'd be a, a bad approach going forward. So, I would definitely lean much more. So, I would definitely lean much more towards, you know, amending the existing ordinance, building on the good work that has been done. And if that is deemed not sufficient, then absolutely we could explore, you know? But there has been a lot of resources already expended, you know, as good stewards of the community resources, be it monetary or policy or otherwise, I would just lean more towards amending the ordinance, finding, you know, where those seams are that can be, you know, identified and improved or mitigated versus trying to just wholesale eliminate it, because I think it's just gonna create too many unintended consequences that we're gonna be, probably have to police up for, you know, considerable future. Thank you.
Councilman Peters?
Thank you, guys. Hopefully you can hear me okay, I've got my AirPods in here. Well, I would just say thank you for pulling this meeting together. I actually really enjoy these meetings because personally, I'm in this profession of development, and I really enjoy policy, so I'm like a hog in mud over here, enjoying all the conversation. That being said, I would also frame this up or preface this by saying, this isn't new. You know, like I said, we do development, we do conditional use permits, we do, you know, we're on the other side of the bench in front of county commissions, in front of city councils, trying to do projects. That's my full-time job. Hey, this isn't, I would attribute this to livestock development or a solar project where most counties have livestock development and solar in their ordinance somewhere, and they don't know it until a project happens. And I think that's what we're having a little bit here, is there's a lot of work done with community members in Watertown where they put a policy in place, and now projects are happening, and the community's like, whoa, 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 this is not what we bargained for. And that's okay, right? That's the beauty of an ordinance, is it's able to be amended and changed. So, this doesn't shock me, this conversation I think is needed. In fact, I see this conversation happening several times throughout the course of the years as we continue to develop the lakes and more things come in, and we refine things as needed, that's not out of the ordinary. That being said, I've expressed my comments to the mayor in an email, and I just sum it up quick here for everybody. It alarmed me right away when we had campgrounds and other things under permitted uses. Certainly, as Councilman Durand said, there's been a lot of public outcry now with these campgrounds coming to fruition. And certainly, those were amended and put down to conditional uses, which I think is appropriate. And I have expressed interest of amending this. What I am fearful of is completely pulling this out and replacing it. I think that we would ultimately be doing a disservice to ourselves by doing that. Not only do I not know necessarily how that works, do we put a moratorium on it where we have no projects coming forward until we put a new policy in place? I don't know. Perhaps that's a question for Mr. Hayes, but that scares me. I think that this can be amended, it can be changed and refined while still in place. And I'm a big believer of voting with the ordinance. You know, certainly on the conditional use, there's the political component where you wanna listen to the neighbors, you wanna listen to the community, what do they want? But these are really the meetings that I wanna listen to the community at. I want to hear the concerns here, not when we have a project in hand that follows the rules that comes before us, because, you know, the planning and zoning and the city council, when it comes to us, and they check all the boxes from a zoning perspective, it's really hard to say no if they are following the rule. So, on that note, I guess I won't lament on anything else. I mean, I agree with all the comments, I see both sides of it. I would just say for the record, I'm absolutely a proponent for amending it. I would pause at pulling it completely and starting from scratch. And I would also say, you know, when doing policy, as most of us know that have done policy, you don't wanna let perfect be the enemy of you. We're never going to please everybody, so let's put a product in place that most of us can agree on, and that's not to say we can't pull it back out as needed and amend it. So, appreciate the time, Mayor, and I'll go on mute, but happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Councilman. That's what I'm saying, Councilman Shuddy.
All right, thank you all. I appreciate listening to all the input. I moved to Watertown 32 years ago from Nebraska, and growing up, learning how to waterski, for example, in a little gravel pit, moving to Watertown and seeing Lake Compesca was quite an eye-opener, and so I appreciate the asset that it is for Watertown. And living out there for 13 years, you know, so I've kinda got a pulse of some things out there just from my perspective, and the things we've done have been big. There wasn't a bike trail out there when I lived out there, and having two little kids, you know, it was, I can see how that's a great addition that we've done. But living on the south side of the lake, on South Lake Drive, there was already Prairie Winds was there, but I could only imagine if there was a day when Prairie Winds wasn't there, and people were living on South Lake Drive, and it was brought up that we're gonna put this golf course in, and there's gonna be this big parking lot, you know, on a certain area, and I happen to live across from that parking lot. Imagine if I was told that, maybe at first I may have been, oh, what, we're gonna have this big parking lot across the street from me? There's gonna be, what, this clubhouse and all this traffic and everything? I could see, you know, on that side of it, it could have been an issue, but being on the other side, living out there and having that golf course there, for example, it didn't bother me one bit, having that parking lot across the street. So sometimes I think there's concerns, because we're just so used to the status quo, when, you know, sometimes the development, the progress is a good thing, we just gotta be open to it. So I just, I just wanna share that perspective for this today. But that said, also, as Councilman Durand's mentioned about responsible growth, I know that Councilman Dan Fort and Mr. Hayes talked about detail. There are some items on this last proposed development that I voted against on conditional use with the storage units. There is some wisdom on where storage units should go, for example, on that current one, or how many units of, you know, like this apartment-type style living. So, there is, I'm glad that went to conditional so we could vote on it, but yes, is there a way to get it more detailed to where we can improve on, as the other gentleman had mentioned too, and it's good, and others have said it, doesn't mean it's wrong what we started with, but there is wisdom in learning after a few years, and learning what's working and not working, and probably there is, there should be some detail put into this with some of these perspectives that have been brought up and proposals. So that's why I'm open to this discussion, I'm open to making some amendments to improve on it, but also keep in mind, we're always gonna have that knee-jerk reaction of people saying, oh, you know, development not good out there, the lake, you know, we should just leave it as is, just have residential living, which there's some wisdom to that, but you know what, there's value in, we just gotta be open to some things, those changes are good, we just gotta get used to that. So, I guess that would be my, that's just sharing my thoughts and perspective on this as well. So, I appreciate this time to discuss and work through it.
Thank you, Councilman. That is everyone, and thank you all for really participating in that process. I wanted to give everyone a chance to be heard in front of everyone else. And being in the positions that we are all in, everything essentially, eventually, and essentially boils down to a vote. And this vote is going to be trying to give our respective boards guidance on how we are going to move forward. Councilman Shuddy and Councilman Peters, did Mallory, Mallory, did you email them the ballot?
Uh-huh. They should have gotten it. Yes.
Okay. Councilman Shuddy and Councilman Peters, do you have the four items, the four options?
I'm currently gonna look it up right now.
Okay. Councilman Peters?
Yep, I have them here.
Okay. If you want to, I would encourage you to vote just by number. You can send it to me, you can send it to City Manager Mac, you can send it to anyone on the council, you can send it to everyone on the council, but you would have to do that on blind copy, but however you wanna do that, I wanna encourage that that is done privately and on the record. And I am now going to ask everyone to take your first sheet, which is ballot one, and you write your name down at the top, and you vote on what your option is.
Can I ask for clarification?
Oh, and I see, I'm gonna say, circle the option that you want to move forward. Sorry, Councilman Dan Fort, yes?
Is the only difference between two and three the difference of, he has individuals submit any and all suggestions for amendment versus a committee? That's really the only difference?
That's the fine difference, yes. Okay. So, actually, I'm just gonna have you circle your options. Just circle your number one option. Are you sure your name is on top? Hold it once time. Could I have one person pick up the votes from the planning commission, one person pick up the votes from the town? Chairman Dolly, do you prefer to have a third party read out the votes?
That would be fine.
Okay. Carla? Do you have the votes from the planning commission? Unless there is an objection about Carla reading off the votes?
All right, for ballot one, Hanson voted for number two, amend the ordinance. Dolly voted for three, explore the ordinance. Dorgit voted for two, amend the ordinance. Alewski voted for two, amend the ordinance. Hayes voted for three, explore the ordinance. Frank voted for one, leave the ordinance as is. Inspire voted for two, amend the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Oleen, two, amend the ordinance. Peters, two, amend the ordinance. Cooper, two, amend the ordinance.
She's got three of them.
Dan Fort is three, explore the ordinance. Bueller with the smiley face, two, amend the ordinance. There's not a heart on it, that might have been. The last one there is two, amend.
Who was that one?
Uh, Durand.
I have a text from Councilman Shuddy, he votes two, if anyone would like to see it. All right, we are going to go to the second vote then. We have a majority vote from the planning commission to go forward with two. We have a majority vote from the council to go forward with two. Please take ballot two. And this is not the absolute end, this is just to give us better guidance going forward. Option two A is amend using the existing procedures. That's essentially that any councilman can pick any amendment or amend it and bring them forward, any planning commission member, likewise. I will guarantee you, I have talked it over with City Manager Mac, and neither one of us have any problem. You don't, we will, we will, basically, I will give you an automatic second on any order, any amendment you wanna bring forward. You don't even need to get a second one or something like that. If you feel strongly about bringing one forward, we will get it heard in front of both commissions. So, that is, but that is the procedure where you have to actually make that proposal. Option two is, we are basically going to take all 14 amendments, or, is it 14, 16? However many we have, and we are going to give them to their day in court. So, very quick.
What if one person says I wanna do all 16?
Sure can.
So, my point is, it seems to me, I don't wanna get into the weeds, it seems to me that if I'm gonna just pick one off of 16, or I'm gonna have a substitute coming in on that 16, and those things have a counterbalance to three, four, and seven on here, I'll make the motion today, I can start. If we're gonna open up one, we might as well open up all 16, and then it gets back to the whole idea of exploring this. I mean, that's where I'm at with it.
All right, because, because I'm gonna have to cover you down just for time.
Yeah.
It's an imperfect process, but it has been for the last four years.
I'll give you 31.
Yeah.
Mayor, I gotta say, I don't understand the difference. Okay? I really don't.
If it's the will of the body, I can just leave it as two. We have a majority vote to amend it. That, in my mind, basically leaves it up to each member present to decide how you want to move forward, with what amendments and when. And as Commissioner Hayes said, it's like if they wanna bring all 16, they can, or there could be more. There could be more.
And how does that process move forward from a staffing standpoint? That's where I'm concerned.
That's the question that I have, is whatever the amendments are, whether it's one or all 16, is the desire to have staff draft language related to all of these and bring the language forward? Or are you all, I just need to know, we can do that, happy to do it.
It's your decision, City Manager, right?
But it's the planning commission's decision under statute. So whatever staff brings, the planning commission is the gatekeeper. City council can't enact a zoning regulation without planning commission action first. And so, if there is, that's where I'm at, if there's 12 or 16 or 24 options, there's still gonna have to be an exploratory of the planning commission to review that language prior before it makes a recommendation to the city council after a due public process.
It would come forward as an act of.
So, I guess, from what I would be, is like, if you're looking from a process standpoint, I would say, if anybody wants to make an amendment, whether it's C16 or five other ones, throw them into the kitchen. And then that gives staff the ability to quote that out, and if it means that putting it in an ordinance format, and that ends up becoming the process, then that then comes back to the planning commission for further vetting.
I would second that in terms of, you know, you should probably open it up so we can give it a thorough due process to get all the considerations, all the stakeholder input here, and not unnecessarily constrain it, you know? So open it up to all the amendments, then let the staff have at it. You know, there are gonna be things they're gonna screen out because they don't comply with other ordinances, you know, and so they can frame it up for us. But we're gonna, we're gonna have a nice, long debate about it.
Holy Christ, I guess something's gonna happen inside of a week, two weeks, three months.
Right, right.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah.
That's just.
From, no, but from my perspective, that's why I had these two options. Because I'll just say, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of certain councilmen, but certain councilmen have brought forward a proposal, I'll just say, one councilman brought forward a proposal of three specific amendments that he felt would solve the issue. I don't want to prevent that councilman from bringing forward those three and not the others, if he has no interest in it. That's why I have these two options. But if you, whether for policy reasons or for exhaustive reasons, want to examine all of them, then that can be your vote.
I'm not saying one, two, I'm just saying, how about we just put together two weeks? Everybody's got two weeks, you just throw it into the hat. That way we know what we're dealing with.
Sure can. So, this isn't definitive, but it's trying to give us guidance, right? So, if you want to have the option A, which is, it is up to the individual member to bring forward a proposal, whether that be one amendment or multiple amendments at a time, then that is up to, then that is voting for A. If you want all amendments considered, that is option B. And the timeframe is open-ended, because even on A, the timeframe is open-ended, because there's no time limit. I'm not forcing every person here that you have to come forward and you're running within a year. You can come forward within a year. So, can be a while, so. Again, write your name down, vote A or B.
Can I ask a question? Yep. To cheat early. I'm looking at staff now. Decisions are gonna be submitted like this. I mean, that's really, might have an issue directed, somebody's got a solution here, somebody's got a solution here, maybe they aren't directly related, they're incidentally related, how are they gonna sort through that? How are they gonna draft language that's like this? If we don't have some, I'll go back to it, what we're doing is we're playing I'll go back to it. What we're doing is, we're playing around with number three. We just aren't doing it. That's really what we're doing. And I question how staff is going to do this. I... The old saying that I learned hunting years ago, good luck. But I'm serious. I think things are going to make it more difficult.
Proceededly speaking, I'm saying that's a what-if scenario. I'm looking at a scenario where we might not get a single amendment brought forward. That's, I mean, that's a possibility. I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's what will happen. But if, if they impact, then we can have that debate as part of the debate. Councilman Beal?
What does an amendment look like? What does that look like?
Okay, let's say if your idea is you want to separate Pelican from Inpesca. You make that note to staff. Staff will figure out the language to separate Pelican from Inpesca. It will come back. Council will send it down to planning commission. Planning commission vets it, votes on it, sends it back up to us. So, if you have a specific idea, staff will find a way to word it, shape it in with the ordinance.
Should we be elaborating on the reasoning behind those proposals?
That's up to you on... Couldn't you come forward?
Oftentimes, oftentimes, you don't necessarily understand unless you understand the logic behind it or the reasoning that's coming out of somebody's head. To just have a statement of what you want without the reasons of why or why not, whatever that is. Again, I go back, how staff going to, they going to deal with that?
I guess we should be open to a suggestion.
I mean, in this case, I'm looking at it as, let's say if, let's say Mayor Olean is bringing forward an amendment. I would work with staff to get it worded to fit with what I want. I would bring it to the planning commission. I would personally be there, because this is me bringing the amendment. And at that point, if I have a long history as to why I feel that this is important, then that would be part of my presentation. If I wanted to do extra research as to justification for that reasoning, then I can do that. Whether that be, let's say, I talked with Confluence, and Confluence never wanted horses. Well, at that time, you can bring forward Confluence, and if you wanted to do that research, you can make that as part of your, part of your presentation as to why you think this amendment is a good one.
On the board.
I'm wondering, and this is just a wonder, that, because we do want to accommodate, but it is important to look at things holistically, because the ordinance has to be administered as a whole versus independently. Perhaps an option could be, all right, over the next week, you all review these proposed amendments. Is there anything missing from these that we aren't on the list? And then staff could take the comprehensive list and start preparing. Because some of these are contradictory to one another, so you don't want to have, like, you don't want to talk about one at one meeting and one at the next.
With respect to current ordinance.
I'm just trying to come up with a process that might get us to an end product. And I will be quiet. Whatever you all tell us to do, we will do.
Again, what I want is, when the dust settles, is what we all want. We just want the dust to settle, and we can move forward. What I heard from planning commission members that I've talked to, and we've heard some of it tonight, but they want to understand, where's the support, where's the council at on this? Why are we going to do all of our work if the council's not in support of this? And if we do this in an isolated basis, that everybody throws it into the hat, it goes to staff, I don't even know what's in there. It goes to you guys, and you guys look at it and go, you don't know where the council at on this. And all of a sudden, you guys go, well, it must be what they want. And so, you agree to it, it gets to council, we go, no. We're right back to some of the issues that we've been at, where we're we're not able, enabling ourself to work together and make that unified recommendation forward, which makes it more difficult for both parties, and it makes it really difficult, I think, for staff. But I could see that happening. I could see us go, and then, you know, on your shoes, you'd hear me say that, but I've been there. It's like, okay, but now here it is, so, but yeah, council, when it gets to us, we don't approve it.
All right.
So...
And we've got to finish it.
Yeah, we do. Well, okay, so, because I'm just, you know, going to play out there, why can't we, as a group, sit right here and go through that list of fifteen and say that we agree or don't agree, and we bang heads here, and then we go to staff instead of taking their time until, just like Mike is saying, is there something as close to meeting that we can't do that? And have a workshop right here next week and do vary that? I mean, especially since we have sixteen items that we're already interested in. Why can't we look at them and, to your point, and take the ones that are, yeah, that's, you know, they're already contradicting each other here. We can hash that out and then take those fifteen or ten items, because we were able to, you know, agree on it here, and then present that.
I think that was the intention of item three on the initial ballot, and there may have been some misconception on what...
So, but there's nothing, there's nothing illegal about this board meeting, us meeting without city staff here, correct? Or is it going to be an open meeting?
No, any council meeting has to have...
What if we're not in an official meeting? We're trying to amend an ordinance. That's all we're doing.
Any official meeting of the council has staff, where they have the, they have the option to be...
Oh, I'm not saying they don't, but I'm saying, can, does that...
And again, I only say this to do this for a meeting, and what we're doing here, we're setting ourselves up for immense failure. If you got these sixteen and there's five other ideas out there, my suggestion would be, share those funny ideas in the next week or two. Let this committee vote on which seven they can tackle. Take the seven that have the meeting that Rhonda wants to have, talk about, we might scream and yell at each other, and at the very end, we might say, we got three we all agree on, that's the swing vote.
Well, and...
And that might be all you can accomplish. Or we might turn around and say, you know, throw the finger at all of us, and we don't get nothing done.
That would be man, or clarifying, when you said committee, you're referring to...
All of us.
All of us.
Okay, so what I'm saying...
Those that want to participate.
Okay, I just want to make it clear. If that's what you want, vote two B.
And I did.
I mean, that's two B. That's my option, is two B. Okay? So, if that's what you want, vote two B, okay? I mean...
I don't get a vote.
So, I mean, it's there. If you want all of them considered, and we can work if that's all together, if it's separate, I don't care. But the intent was, are we going to do one-offs or are we going to consider them all? And that's up to you. And I was saying...
One quick point, clarification, Mayor, just a question. Who gets to bring recommendations forward to the ordinance? Is it just the councilman? Because we're going to consider what's brought to us.
I'm giving the option to the planning commissioners as well.
Statute and city's existing zoning regulations say that any commission can initiate changes to the city's...
All right. So, your options are two A. More of the one-off, or however you want to call it, bringing forward specific amendments. Option two B is bring forward all proposed amendments. Actually, I was fine with it. Commissioner Dolly, you okay with?
Yep.
Hand vote. Councilman Peters and Shuddy, are you okay just voice voting?
Yep, they were voting on two A and two B, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Yep, I'm available.
All right. Okay, Commissioner Dolly, you can call your... All of them from the city planning commission on two A. All in favor, raise your hand. Two B. All right. People online, the vote was unanimous for two B. All right. City council, all those in favor of two A, please raise your hand. Councilman Shuddy or Peters, if you want to vote for two A, say so. If not, we will go to two B. All right, option two B.
Yes, raising my hand.
Okay, there we go. We are going to move forward, and we are going to consider all proposed amendments. If you have others, then bring them forward, and then we will consider this as a group. With that said...
Bring them forward to you.
Can I make, can I make... I'm going to take, contact Commissioner Dolly and myself, and then we will forward them to staff to get...
Do you want, the staff want a time plan to be able to manage this? You want these things to you inside of two weeks or a month?
Well, I think the next logical step would be to schedule a joint work session. And from there, I think then you establish the timeframe. Some of this stuff might take quite a while to research or vet. Some of it might be pretty simple, but we can, really up to you when you want to have the work session.
So, then we should be gathering our thoughts, sending what we know or want now, which might be added to later if, at a work session. But then the work session is like, okay, here's everything you got so far, the wording that we've got so far. And so, now where are we going from here? Time-wise.
A question that I do have for clarity, and you guys have to go, is your desire at that work session to have proposed language?
We will...
Not fine by us.
Okay.
Many of the staff is not going to be ready for that.
Okay, we don't have to figure out everything right now. Hey, you guys have a meeting you got to go to. We just needed guidance on what we were waiting, okay? We're not figuring everything out now. There'll be more to come. So, that said, we've got the guidance that we wanted, okay? Anything good for the body?
I'll take a motion to adjourn from the planning commission.
I'll take that motion.
Second, all in favor.
All right. Chair, we're going to take a motion to adjourn from the council. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, taken by Councilman Bealer. Any discussion on that? Turning on the motion is to adjourn all ones in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried.